...and we are at the council meeting. Item number one is to call the meeting to order, and it's 7:30, and we are underway. Item two is the roll call. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. We've had a suggestion from Mayor Bedeau that we have a lot of people that may want to participate in item, where is it? What item is it?
Eight or seven B.
Seven B, the consideration for the conditional use permit for the operation of a private learning center at 310 North Seventh Street. I'd like to suggest, before we make the motion, that we move that to item five and a half, after the consent calendar, but before council committee reports.
I move, we adopt the agenda with that recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Chairman Johnson, a second by Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are underway. Item five is the consent calendar. This is a notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Motion.
I have a motion by, was that O'Day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a second by Pritchett.
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That motion is adopted. Next up then will be five and a half. That's the item that we just moved, which is, let me get it up here, seven B, which is listed as the consideration for considerable use permit for the operation of the private learning center at 310 North Seventh. So, I'm going to ask two staff members to give their thoughts on this. One will be Attorney Langle, the other will be attorney, attorney. Previously disbarred attorney, now community development director, Chansky. And then if we have any questions of staff, either those two others, council will get a chance to ask staff. And then if you're in the audience, you will get a chance to speak on this issue. Okay? Now, you're only going to get a couple minutes, like three minutes, but I want to make sure everybody gets heard on this. Okay? All right. So, we'll start with Attorney Langle. Can you give us your thoughts on the conditional use permit?
Sure, Mr. President and council. We've had a lot of discussions on this at the staff level and have looked at the issues here. Really, so we have a zoning ordinance that allows schools in the R1 district as a conditional use. And so, when you look at conditional uses, not only do you look at what the conditions are, but also does the facility constitute a school under Minnesota law, or under the zoning ordinance, excuse me. The zoning ordinance, however, does not actually define the word "school," which is not uncommon in my experience. You know, a lot of zoning ordinances were drafted years ago with the thought of the typical brick-and-mortar school in mind. So, if you don't have a definition of the zoning ordinance, ultimately, it's up to the city council to decide what that term means. What does the term "school" mean in the context of the zoning ordinance? One place to go look for assistance in defining a school is the education code. And, in fact, the applicant cited a portion of the education code stating that, his belief, that the facility, the private learning center or tutoring center, is in fact a non-public school because he's satisfying at least some of the compulsory education requirements. Does that facility actually constitute a school, however, under the education code? Under the education code, the compulsory, the term "non-public school" is defined under the education code, and it's defined as any school, church, or religious organization where a resident may fulfill compulsory instruction requirements in section 128.22. The applicant indicates that he does satisfy the subject areas that are required, he does satisfy the instructor requirements because he has a baccalaureate degree. But in addition to that, there are some other requirements, and there's a question as to whether he satisfies even those requirements. And here's what I'm getting at. So, in his statements to staff and to the council, he indicated that regardless of the curriculum being provided, he is not the primary instructor for these students. Primary instructor is, always has been, and remains, the homeschool parents. These are homeschool children. Homeschool children who are being tutored, provided additional instruction by Mr. Erfirth or his staff in this home. But they are not the primary instructors. That remains the province of the parents. As far as the state of Minnesota is concerned, they are homeschooled students. So, does he provide instruction of all the subject areas? He provides, as I understand, a tutoring in those areas, but ultimately, the parents are the ones responsible for ensuring that the students receive that instruction. The compulsory education law also requires assessments. Mr. Erfirth indicated that the assessments are done by the parents. He does not do the assessing. He does not do the reporting to the extent that is required for any of these students. Based upon those roles, those division of duties, if you will, where he's providing tutoring to these students during the day, perhaps when the parents are at work or whatever, but the parents remain in charge of the education, the parents remain, as far as the Department of Education are concerned, the school. It does not appear that he satisfies a definition of a non-public school under the education code because he does not perform all the duties of a school. If you're not performing all the duties of a school, then you're not a quote-unquote "school" under the education code. You're simply a learning center, a tutoring center. There are dozens and dozens of tutoring centers across the state of Minnesota. They are businesses. They are not schools. They provide instruction in all sorts of areas on a daily basis, to basis to thousands of students every day during the school year. A private tutoring center is not the same thing as a school and constitutes a business, and businesses are not a permitted or conditional use. Are not a permitted or conditional use in the R1 district. So, in terms of using the education code, it appears to me, after looking at all this, that this proposed facility is not in fact a school, again, as far as the education code is concerned. But you're not the Department of Education. You're the city of Brainerd. It's your zoning ordinance. Ultimately, it's up to the councils to decide what the word "school" means. You can rely on the education code, or you can make it a broader definition than what the education code uses. It's up to the councils to decide whether the word "school" in the zoning ordinance encompasses only those types of organizations that the Department of Education or state law would constitute school, or you go broader than that for policy reasons or what have you. That's ultimately up to the council. But my point is that if you're going to define "school" under the education code, as Mr. Erfirth attempted to do, in my opinion, it fails. It is not a quote-unquote "non-public school" under Minnesota law. So, if that's the definition that you're going to use, it's in fact a business. It is not a school, and it is not a conditional use, and the CUP application should be denied. And that concludes my comments.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Before we ask any questions, if there are any, we'll ask Mr. Chansky if he's got anything he wishes to add to the discussion.
Mr. Chair, I think Attorney Langle summed up the issue tonight quite well, the issue being, how does the city council define a school in the city of Brainerd? All I will add is that, I believe, as when the planning commission was considering this, they held to a much more broad definition based off of their comments. They didn't necessarily define "school" during that hearing, but based off of their individual comments that they all made, I believe they were holding to a much more broad term, and I think that's what led to their unanimous recommendation to approve the CUP. But ultimately, again, this does go to the city council and what you define as a school within the city of Brainerd, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. Okay. Any other, any questions of any staff, including Joe or David? Now, we'll start with Ted.
Yeah. Could I maybe just repeat that definition from the Board of Education again? Or can we see that? Or if you just repeat it, that'd be fine.
So, under 123B.41, a non-public school is defined as any school, church, or religious organization where a resident may fulfill compulsory instruction requirements in section 128.22. So, it's pointing back to a different section that has a list of what needs to be done by a school, regardless of what kind of school it is. Follow-up?
You may.
And then the part about the primary instructor, does that come from that other list?
So...
No matter who's providing that education?
Yeah. So, regardless of who's providing the education, the school has to provide education in certain subject matters, so those are listed, you know, English and so forth, math. And then, there's a requirement in the next subdivision, 10, about the instructor and what background they have to have. And if it's a public school, you have to be licensed as a teacher, and if you're not, you can have a baccalaureate degree. And then, in addition to that, there are certain assessment requirements as well for compulsory education schools, for schools providing compulsory education.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ted?
That's it.
Okay. Any other questions of staff before I open the floor for citizen comment? Yeah, Mr. O'Day.
I guess I'm just confused on if, if the Montessori school where it sits now is a school, then, or if it's not a school. I'm confused at why, why if they, if they had the same operation going in one location compared to the other. I get there's a homeschooling aspect to it, but it's still under the same school umbrella, as far as I can tell.
Mr. President, council, I am not familiar with the Montessori school and how it operates. I have no evidence before me that they are operating the same. My understanding is that these students have aged out of the Montessori school. They were being homeschooled by their parents. And at some point, some of these parents asked Mr. Erfirth to assist with the homeschooling, to provide instruction. And he has obtained or created curriculum for these students. And he, in his application, refers to it as a private, members-only tutoring center, which homeschool parents can certainly do that. They have the right to have other people assist. But the homeschool parents remain the school. They are the primary instructors.
Is that okay, Mike? Are you all right?
One quick follow-up.
You can.
So, would that mean that the, to meet the definition, the parents of each child would have to be at the house to fulfill the requirement? Or are you saying that it could only be one single family homeschooling in a given house?
I'm not aware of anything under the, under the state education code that gets that restrictive with respect to homeschool students. And I don't believe it's uncommon at all for parents to seek assistance outside of the homeschool to educate their children. Again, they ultimately remain responsible for that education. They are required to do the assessments. They are required to ensure that the compulsory education requirements are being met. How they do that, I believe, is pretty much up to them.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Tiffany.
Joe, so, I just want to double-check my understanding here. That definition is a state definition, and really, we can define it however we want, just to double-check. That does not define a school in our ordinance?
Members, Stengline, I know that's absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The zoning ordinance is entirely up to the city council ultimately.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none? It's all perfectly clear in the council's minds, I can tell. If anybody else would like to add testimony before we take a motion, and rest assured, once we take a motion, you will not be able to testify. This is your chance. I want to give you each a chance to say what you have to say, but I want to keep it moving along, so try and keep it to three minutes or less. And I'd like you to start by, and you can come up to this microphone, and one thing that we require because we are broadcasting, and do keep a record of this, is that you start with your name and where you live, your mailing address. Okay? And if you're online, and Sean, I don't know if we have people online, you also can speak tonight. You'll, you'll hit star three to raise your hand, and then, and then our IT director will identify you, and then star six when it's your turn to speak. But we'll start with who's in the audience. Please come forward, one at a time, state your name, address, and give us the three-minute version.
I am James Erfirth, 13216 Highway 18, Brainerd, Minnesota, and my wife and I are leading this charge on the conditional use permit. We are homeschool parents ourselves, and we do own the Montessori School of Brainerd. We're working with the other homeschool parents. We're all in this together, and we have chosen to go this route with a house in this home. It's a, it shows that us, parents in our schools, combine in one place, and we're going with the conditional use permit to be able to allow us to have that one facility for these kids to do some group learning and to, and to manage a, an environment that's conducive to homeschooling, a home, as well as practical learning, which is something that our Montessori training, I believe, pushes, is that environment. So, we're trying to create the environment that's best to learn in, and that's what we're doing. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? You can come up and say the exact same thing if you want to. It's okay.
Hello. John Berg, 15340, Russell Road, Brainerd. I'm a parent, a grandparent of three of the Montessori students, and having spent many days seeing what's going on in the Montessori program, I can only speak very highly for what their efforts are doing for my grandchildren. I feel their education has been exemplary. Their learning at levels equivalent or above their age. The state of Minnesota has one definition. I have another definition of what a school is. In my mind, a school is where children gather and learn under supervision of instructors, parents on a periphery, or directly involved. I've been at the school myself personally. I know what goes on there. This is a school in the true sense of the word. I grew up in a small town in Minnesota where, you know, school was a small thing for me. And for me, this is exactly what my grandchildren are getting. I would strongly urge the city council to broaden their thought process in terms of what the state says a school is, and look at what the meaning of the council can come to as to what a school is. This is a school, and I encourage you most strongly to endorse the PUC. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Preston Wenderski, 8073, Travis Trail, Brainerd, Minnesota. I just want to ensure that the council is aware, I don't know if it was intentional on the city attorney's part or not, but you should have all of the information. And pursuant to Minnesota statute 123B.4100 definitions, subdivision nine, it does say, "Non-public school defined means any school, church, or religious organization or homeschool," which was omitted when city attorney shared his definition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Anybody else in the, I'm going to ask you again, but I'm going to see if online anybody wants to speak. Okay. Then I'm going to ask in the, in the audience, anybody else who wants to speak? Come on up.
Joseph Benson, 9622, South Lively, Brainerd, Minnesota. We've had two children attending what we call a school for the last several years, and we do believe that this is a school with our whole hearts. This is where our children are learning. We work as a group. We assist, your first, they assist us. They are technically homeschooled, but if you ask either one of them, this is where they go to school. This is their community. These are their friends. This is where we've chosen to educate them. And I believe honestly that as a school, this is no different than any other school. You're going there to receive instruction from a teacher. Now, be it homeschooled or be it in a public school system, I don't know if that's for the council to decide, but I do believe that this definition of a school fits very clearly as where the your first are teaching.
Thank you, Joe. Please come up.
Good evening, council. My name is Jim Runberg. I live at 1205 Lakeview Lane North in Brainerd. My wife and I, my wife Diane, own a fourplex building at the corner of Kingwood and North Seventh. It's the southeast quadrant of that intersection. And I do have some concern about this project. I've been an appraiser, real estate appraiser, for 35 years, and I've run across several instances where I've been asked to appraise for loss in value for these kinds of things that are not in my backyard that neighbors may raise an objection to. My concern would be the traffic that we currently have in the area. Parking on occasion is, every spot is used on Kingwood on both sides of the street. I wonder where the parents are going to park, how many cars that might be, you know, has the council looked at where parking is going to be for these folks? The other thing I wanted to mention was the way this property is now going to be used, if it's passed, or is being used frankly, in that a fence, a six-foot-high fence has been built, of course, which wasn't there a month ago. And, you know, it's, it's a solid wall that fronts the street, fronts Seventh Street now. And if, I guess my feeling is if this is passed by the council, if this proceeds forward, I would make a request of the council to require that some softening of that fence be required. Bushes, maybe some trees, so that it fits into the neighborhood, the R1 designation, better. So, thank you for your consideration, council. I'm looking forward to your, you know, your resolution here.
Thank you. Anybody else? What's that?
It said, "Oi."
So, you did. Anybody else? I'm going to ask one last time, and then we're going to close this, even though this wasn't listed as a public hearing. Rest assured, everybody up here wants to hear what you have to say. So, one last time. Anybody else? Okay. So, we're closed with that. We've got testimony from staff, testimony from people in chambers. We asked online. Now, we're looking for a motion to either approve the request for conditional use permit to operate a private learning center at 310 North Seventh Street, or to deny. Tiffany, you've got your hand up. You're up.
I move to approve the conditional use permit to operate a private learning center at, or otherwise known as a school, at 310 North Seventh Street with the condition that all the requirements in the code be met.
Thank you. Second, and a second by Mike. Okay, we've got a motion by Tiffany Stengline, and second by Mike O'Day. Now, we'll take testimony from the council. Chairman Johnson.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question and then a comment or two. My question is regards to the screening. Can we add that condition to this conditional use permit right now to put up some bushes and green space to address the neighborhood in front of the fence?
Ask Mr. Chansky that.
As it's a conditional use permit, you can put reasonable conditions on it. Again, most, the idea of conditional use permit would be put conditions that would reduce any negative impact, and so, obviously, it's the attorney here sitting here, but I don't believe that would be an issue if the council were to put that condition on there. It doesn't seem unreasonable.
Okay.
Okay.
There is not, that's...
There is not currently right now. I would really like, Mr. Chair, to see that condition added to the permit, but even if it were not, I'm glad we held off on this for two weeks, Mr. Chair. You brought up some very good questions, and Attorney Langle was not here at the last meeting. He was able to answer for me what, what we're dealing with, or what we're trying to answer on what is a school. And he brought up a state definition in state statute, but it reminds me of the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting tonight. Fire Chief Stunek informed me that firefighters have a lobbyist in St. Paul to fight for firefighter issues. I imagine there are lobbyists down there writing things about schools, too, potentially. So, I like the idea that we just make the decision ourselves here in Brainerd, and I think a school is a community, and it's apparent to me they have a community going here. So, I support the motion, the conditional use permit. I would ask the motioner to add some condition to get some, some green bushes or something addressing the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay.
I will move to amend the motion to include a condition of adding appropriate greenery.
Okay.
If that's specific enough for, yes. Some green stuff.
I'm not sure that it is, but...
Mr. Chair, I think I can work with city staff to...
Excellent. Yes.
Vegetation or screening.
Perfect. And are you seconding that motion?
No.
Mike did. Mike seconded the screening motion. I will second for a second time. That's perfect. All right. So, the motion, the, the motion is to amend for, to work with staff, if approved, to work with staff for appropriate screening of the stockade fence. Okay? Is there any questions or comments on that motion?
I just want to say one thing about it being a school. I think that parents not only have a duty, but have a responsibility to their child's education. And so, I believe that if you are taking that responsibility and extending that in this way, you're doing the right thing, and I believe it's a school.
Okay. That's really not pertinent to the motion.
No, but you asked for comments.
On the motion, on the screen.
The motion to amend the motion.
Oh, that.
On the subsidiary motion.
There we go.
Anything else you want to talk about, Dave? We'll do it after the meeting.
Sounds good.
Right now, we're talking about the bushes.
Open forum, you can talk.
We'll let you join up for open forum. So, if we can, keep the comments to the screening of the fence, the motion that's on the floor. Okay? Okay. Yeah, Mr. O'Day, who didn't second it?
I did.
After I begged you to. Go ahead.
Well, I didn't know we were done yet because I was thinking about adding more things. So, I did have, I did have a few concerns.
Can't keep up now.
Yeah.
I love food trucks.
I did have a few concerns regarding the, the house itself, just in maintenance.
Let's do the bushes. Bushes only. Bushes only. We're only discussing bushes. We have a motion to amend to screen the fence. You seconded it.
Hey, I thought it was part of the original motion.
No.
We're trying to add it to the motion.
I'll still, I'll still... I'll still, I'll still second it.
That's the third time you did it.
Oh, it's the fourth.
I don't think you did that first time.
Geez, I just wonder how we get anything done.
We're really struggling on this one, too.
Yeah.
All right. So, the motion on the floor is to amend the original motion to require, if approved, some sort of screening that staff determines appropriate on the stockade fence. This, okay? Got it? Got it?
Maybe he'll second it again.
He wants to second it again really bad. Not gonna ask him. Chief, anything on the bushes?
Oh, I'm good.
All right.
I'll water 'em.
This is a motion to amend the motion on the bushes on the fence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, aye. So, we'll move back to the amended motion. Now, Mike, did you want to amend the amended motion?
I wanted to discuss the motion.
You got it. You're up.
So, like I was saying, I had concerns about just the overall maintenance of the house, so that it could still appear like a house. I like the way it looks. I knew that house as a kid, played at that house. It's a great, it's a great place. I don't, the fence doesn't really bother me, but I think vegetation would make it look better. Other concern was whether there was going to be a parking lot put in, which Jordan Benson emailed me, and it sounds like that's not part of the plan. The other part I was interested in learning about is if you're continuing to maintain a small, small amount of students, you know, what is it, 10 to 12? And if you get up to 20, 30 students in there, then it's not a house at all anymore. So, I don't know. I guess we can't really discuss that part anymore, but those would be my concerns going in the future. But I think the main thing is we, we have public schools right now that a lot of people don't agree with, a lot of things going on in public schools. And the more options I think we have for kids, for, for parents to send their kids, the better, and competition is good. So, I'm gonna support it.
Excellent, and very nice job staying on target.
I know.
You can still talk about the bushes. No bushes are gone.
All right. Let's look down here for a little bit to the sane people and see if there's anything.
Oh, no, I'm all good.
All right. Anything else back over here?
I have a comment.
Okay. I'm gonna let you speak. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
All right. Well, as, as those of you here know, that I voted to press this back a week or two weeks to this meeting. First time I've ever voted as the mayor. It doesn't happen. It was an astounding, astonishing moment in everyone's lives. But I just wanna say to, to the people here that my, my brother lives a house removed on the corner, it's not really the corner, but a corner in the alley. Beautiful yellow house. And he called me and asked me, why should I be concerned about the school? And my response was, you shouldn't. We, we hear all the time people talking about that we should be spending more time educating our kids on how to do things, you know, in, in terms of managing your, your finances, but also taking care of things around the home. And this is a fantastic opportunity to do that in a setting that is very much like a home. I actually looked at this house, was considering purchasing this house. It is a beautiful house, and I think that it will make a fantastic usage for homeschooled kids to learn that type of skills within that type of environment. I will repeat the, the notion behind this, that I am 100% against parking lots. If your goal is to turn that beautiful yard into a parking lot, you have completely lost me. But as long as you don't do that, yeah, as long as there aren't a thousand streetlights, these guys will hate it. But the parking lot was the only, my only main concern, was just making sure that we're not including a parking lot on the side of this building, and that it, from the application, that is not the case. I can attest that there's plenty of space behind that yard. We looked at it specifically because there was plenty of space behind that yard. So, I just wanna say thank you guys for coming back and waiting. I know that's not necessarily what you wanted to do, but it's important that the council goes through the motions and that the council is checking the boxes and if there's any concerns. So, I fully support this, 100%.
Yeah, vote.
Yeah, we got an odd number of people here, Mayor.
Fully support it.
What if one of us abstains?
You need help, Kelly? I'm here for ya.
No. I think I got this, Chief. Thank you. All right. Everybody has their speak. You know I'm gonna vote against it. You all know I'm gonna vote against it. You know this is my ward. You know it's not against Montessori schools. You guys all gave great testimony for Montessori schools. I, I think that's fantastic. It's about the use in this house. When I come knocking on the neighbor's door and buy their house, 'cause we're gonna work on diesel engines, how happy are you gonna be? When I put up a six-foot stockade fence, do you know what every neighbor around you called and complained about? That ugly fence. It doesn't look like you're being real neighborly. I'm telling you that. You ran a business without living there on a home extended business permit for a year. It doesn't look good. There's a lot of your neighbors that don't trust you and asked me to oppose this, and I'm gonna do it. But you need to know why. Because if you're gonna be a part of a neighborhood, you need to be neighborly, and it doesn't look like you're being neighborly. And I'm gonna be back, live a block away from you, and I think a Montessori school in this zoning is great, but I don't think it's great in this building. I think it's, its character is a single-family home. I think you're taking a single-family home off the single-family home register in a neighborhood that needs single-family homes desperately and turning it into a business. I think our attorney's right. I think our neighbors are concerned, and I think they're right. They should be. Let me tell you what it looks like, and I just told you what it looked like. So, it looks pretty good for you to get your conditional use permit, but I'm asking you to be, you're now no longer in the basement of the Park United Methodist Church. You just moved into a single-family home, and people behind you live in those single-family homes. I'm asking you to be good neighbors. 'Cause it's a neighborhood. It's one that I live in, and my kids went to school there, and I want the kids to go to your school to have the same advantage that my kids did. So, I'm gonna vote against it because of what it looks like, and it doesn't look like a school to me so far. And I don't think you're using that house to the best of the abilities, but you can prove me wrong. Thank you. To all of you, I mean that, but you need to know how I'm gonna vote and why. Okay? We have a vote, and everybody has spoke. I'm gonna cut off conversation now, and I'm gonna ask Minister Burglin to do a roll-call vote. And I apologize, Tiffany, but everybody's had to speak once. We're not gonna do it again.
No, that's okay.
And you're not gonna speak against me.
No, I had a question, but...
Go ahead.
Oh, well, my question was...
No, no, no. Go ahead, Minister Burglin. Please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Ann Bevins.
No.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming and sticking with it, and thank you, Gabe, for guiding us through this. If you have a question that could be asked after the meeting, you can clap. You absolutely can, because there's people, and let me explain to you why, okay? There's a lot of people who aren't here who asked me to vote the way I did, and we don't wanna make them feel bad. We really want to prove them wrong, and that is these people's responsibility. So, we never want to make somebody feel bad of a difference of opinion. So, we generally don't allow clapping. Okay. Tiffany, you have a question that can wait till after the meeting, or is it something that's pertinent to be part of the meeting?
It is pertinent to be part of the meeting.
And I'm gonna open it to everybody else to speak again.
Eight until my report.
I appreciate that, because otherwise, we're gonna start talking about the motion we just did, and it just ended, and a lot of people's hearts went into it, and we don't wanna drag it up forever. Okay? Okay. All right. I have no idea where we are, and if you are just here for this, you can go. Okay? We'll give you a minute. But I think there's a lot of really good stuff on here.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm giving them a minute. Item six is the council committee reports. Item six is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We only had one item on safety and public works tonight, and zero motions coming out of safety and public works tonight. It was more of a discussion that we wanted to get started and came as a, in the end, a recommendation to staff. The item at hand was a discussion to consider policy creation for streetlight requests. Based on a request from 1604 14,000 Northeast, there's a streetlight across the street, essentially next to this person's garage. Apparently, these come in quite a bit. Something like 50 streetlights have been turned back on in the last year? No? Something, we, we get these requests a lot, and the, the idea is to come up with a policy so that staff can handle these requests easily, something that's a blanket answer to a lot of these requests. I can go into detail of what we wanna do with this policy, or we can move on and wait until it comes back from staff. It's really up to you, Mr. President.
If you've got motions, let's have them.
There's no motion.
If you don't, but you'd like to open questions, we can do that.
I can, I can talk about what we kind of steered him to come up with, or, yeah?
Well, I think, you think that would be good, because it might, it might allow for others to think about the, some of the issues with the streetlights.
Okay.
Let's, can we do this in five minutes?
Absolutely.
All right, go ahead.
So, we had a couple examples given to us by Paul, and one was Mankato and one was Shakaby. They both have streetlight policies in order. They cover things like special lighting districts, like, say, downtown, arterial districts, your main arteries, you know, South Sixth, 210, Oak Street, Mill Avenue would, would fall under those, and then residential areas, as well as new developments, commercial areas, things like that. They all have different lighting requirements and different ways to pay for those types of lighting. The big thing is on this one here, dealing with residential areas, and what happened was in 2008, we decided as a city to shut off mid-block lighting. And if you look under the agenda item, you can see that we basically save half, we, we pay half as much in, in street lighting now as we did in 2008, and we still haven't even fully switched to LED lights, so we can continue to save more. Some of the big highlights for what we wanted to accomplish with this is come up with a maximum distance, say, corner to corner on a regular block, which is technically about 380 feet on a reg, regular residential block. That be maybe the, the maximum distance for lighting. So, you have a long block, we still put one in place before anybody asks. Another big thing is the style of lighting, and we had a discussion about how our standard lighting style is pretty cheap-looking, and I've wanted to change it for a long, long time. So, we're gonna have staff look into that and come up with some recommendations, maybe some options, coming up with different kind of standard lighting styles, but they all kind of fit together in one way throughout the city in different lighting districts. Hopefully, we can come up with something that is affordable and aesthetically pleasing compared to what we have. If I forgot anything?
Request.
We also did decide to table this request until we come up with a policy and base it, base the answer on this new policy once we have it.
I presume you're using the wrong verbiage. You're not actually tabling it, you're just not doing anything.
Yeah, we just didn't answer anything.
Tabling is a motion, and it requires...
Yes.
A second and voting and all that sort of stuff. So, we're just not doing anything yet.
Correct.
All right. Just wanna make sure we're not tabling any bushes.
No motions.
Okay.
End of report.
All right. So, that's good. Any questions of Chairman O'Day or Engineer Sandy about where they're going with this? Okay. Thank you, guys. Oh, Mayor Verneau?
Can I just get clarification on the 52 lights? That's 52 lights that have been added, but not necessarily by request. 52 lights that have been added by what? And he's, they are correct. I'm looking at the net change in number of lights, and it does list 52 to the positive.
Buffalo Hills?
I'm assuming that's...
Nope. That's between 2020 and 2021. So, each year is an addition upon itself. So, if you look, we went down 410 from May to December of 2010. That was based on the 1578 above it, and so each number is minus the year prior.
But are these road construction lights or are these requests?
They're, they're not requests.
Yeah, we don't have 52 requests coming. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions on the lighting? Hearing none. Mr. Chair, can...
Yep.
Any others?
Nope.
All right. We will now move on to Personnel and Finance. Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have seven items on the agenda tonight and somewhere between nine and 14 motions. The first item on the agenda is the Fire Department Relief Association Annual Report. If you'll see on page 91, there's a memo from Matt Holmstrom, the Secretary of the Fire Relief Association. They ask to increase their benefit level from 12,000 to 14,750 per year of service, and the motion is to grant that increase from 12,000 to 14,750 per year of service, and I so move.
Second. I have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussions?
Just to point out, they're, they're covered, their balance right now in the pension is 105% of paying out what they need, so they're entirely solvent right now, and that's why they asked for the increase, that they, they can afford it.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Second motion on this agenda item is to authorize staff to sign the annual reports, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next one is the Cable TV Committee Recommendation for the PEG Channel. So, the Cable TV Advisory Committee met. There is an opening to you at home. There is an opening on that commission if you want to be on it. They met, and they had not a quorum, but a unanimous agreement of what we should do, and, and the first step is, I move to authorize staff to establish an agreement with CLC that will revive public access TV, provide some staffing for operating meetings, and allow for city meetings to once again be broadcast on table, cable television, and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
This is just a step in the multi-year saga of the PEG Channel, and we're moving forward on it, I believe.
Mr. Johnson, just nothing in this motion about the money that we collect and giving it to, or a portion of it to CLC?
The discussion, Mr. Chair, was that we'll try to form an agreement with CLC, is what we're telling staff to do right now, and the goal is, at the end of the day, it's similar to what we were doing with our former partner, where half of the franchise fees are set aside for the PEG Channel, and the other half are in the general fund.
Wanted to make sure that was known. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Okay. Second motion on this agenda item is, I move to formally request a refund of unspent funds contributed to Lakes Media by the City of Brainerd to be returned to the city, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stangline. Chairman Johnson?
Mr. Chair, this is just to have staff, or Joe, or somebody draft up a real friendly letter saying, hey, it was nice to touch base with you. Can we please have our money back? Please, please. They're under no legal obligation to give it to us, but it's not, doesn't hurt to ask.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussions? Mr. Johnson may ask one. And that's just, we did, I specifically asked them to bring a proposal to PNF. Did you ever, for the record, did you ever hear back from?
PNF has not received a proposal. Staff has not received
Anybody from staff receive anything from Lakes Area Media Collaborative? So, it's not like we, we didn't try. I asked specifically, it was, it was part of the dispatch discussion, I'm sure.
Teresa's a great writer.
Yeah, actually, I've heard that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one, they wanted two motions. We condensed her down to one. It was getting a little ridiculous at this point. Discussion of assessments on 711 12th Avenue Northeast. The motion is to commit to not recertifying the outstanding assessment for the lot cleanup and utilities in the amount of $2,574.27, but to recertify the street improvement assessment of $5,814.68, and draft a 10-year zero-interest repayment agreement with Ms. Neeson, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
So, what we have here is a tax forfeited parcel that has some outstanding assessments. The road assessment is from 1998. So, there's some outstanding assessments, though the individual who owns or is acquiring, I don't know, the neighboring lot wants to acquire this lot that's tax forfeited. According to the county's tax forfeit policy, they sell it for the fair market value, and then they add all outstanding assessments. Right now, the city has three assessments. $2,159 for cleaning up the lot, $415 for, bill's not paid to BPU, and $5,814 for the street assessment, for the street work done in 1998. Our committee thought, and staff recommended, and we agreed, that we could write off the lot cleanup and the utilities if we're getting a new home built on this lot, but it's just not good precedent to start forgiving street improvement assessments. So, that's where we are.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, ask a question?
Yes.
Do we have any guarantees that people are gonna build on this? Not in this motion that I see, but?
We don't, and it's actually a 45-foot-wide lot. It's not, you couldn't really build much on it.
On the two lots together?
She plans on it, but there's no guarantee in any of this.
So, we could be forfeiting this just so she could own more property?
We, well, the, the lot she is currently buying or does own is an empty lot.
Yep.
So, she might just own two empty lots in the City of Brainerd, then it'll be back on the tax rolls at least.
Excellent. So, the, the whole thing with the house really isn't pertinent to this moment, with the building of the new property, is it?
No, 'cause we're just, we're gonna not, anybody watching at home, we're not recertifying if this motion passes, the lot cleanup or the utilities, whether Ms. Neeson or any, any citizen wants to buy it.
I know. Okay. All right, just wanted to make that clear. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Okay. Now, we'll speed her up a bit. The motion here, this is for the sesquicentennial purchases for the community picnic, and the motion is to authorize renting two bouncy castles, which our insurance does cover, yard games, and chairs, and allotting up to a $750 printing budget for a total of $1,829.68 out of the council's special projects fund to be allotted for the sesquicentennial event, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Chair?
I just, if, if Tiffany wants to explain what they're planning for the event, just a little update, or you can wait until your council committee report, I don't know.
The only thing I would say is that we missed out on the giant Jenga, because we were a little slow. But it's gonna be a great time, big bash, lots of kids. It'll be fun, 'cause we're gonna have giant Yahtzee, if this passes.
And I second that.
Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
So, the next one is consideration for resolution establishing a fire escrow account. So, there is Minnesota State Statute 65A dot 50 that allows cities to establish a fire escrow account. The motion is to adopt the attached resolution establishing a fire escrow account, and I so move.
Second. I have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, so I, I got ahead of myself there before making the motion. So, we have a state statute. Cities have found it difficult over the years, where they have to, like, put in a little bit of work to take land from people to clean up buildings and stuff. And apparently, the state passed a law that makes it very easy for the government to take people's land and take their buildings down, where if we create this fire escrow account after a house burns down and is determined to be at a level where it needs to be torn down, and it's totally gone, we can contact the state, some state agency that'll contact the insurance company, that cuts off a 25% check of the insurance proceeds, that we get to hold an escrow in case we need to use it to clean up the land. And then, once they get their building cleaned up, we give the money back to them. So, it's a good protection for the city. Makes it a lot easier for the city to take people's land.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Nice spin on that, Councilman Johnson.
Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oh, this is a resolution. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes.
No.
Voted knowing committee, too, Stunick.
I thought you'd change your mind when
He was so excited about the bushes.
I thought you'd get smarter on the way.
All right, the next, the next motion is the approval of a loan subordination. The motion is to approve the subordination request for Mr. Darren Crewcheck, 721 Second Avenue Northeast, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stangline. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson?
Uh, he has, he had a grant through the HRA, and we're, and he's refinancing. We're in the second position currently. This'll keep us in the second position. Standard operating procedure when these, these refinancing events happen.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Okay, the next is the 2020 Tax Increment Financing Report Summary. Informational, this is informational. We have filed the reports with the state. It was published in the Brainerd Dispatch. It is also included in the packet. Direct any questions to the Finance Department. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up is item seven, unfinished business. Item 7A is our, oops, what the heck is going on here? A font package is required.
Oh, just click okay.
I've been trying to.
Just hit cancel. Don't
You have to hit okay.
If you click on the box, the words actually appear.
All right. Mr. Chansky, take us through this, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, this was actually considered, first considered during the council July 19 meeting. Again, this is interim ordinance that would put a moratorium on amendments to the current zoning code and official zoning map. The reason we're requesting this is why we're going through the ordinance rewrite process. It's just much easier if someone submits a request. It exempts the city from the 60-day rule, allows us to work with that applicant. So, if, if the city wants to do whatever they're requesting, change the ordinance in a certain way, we can just change it as part of the new ordinance instead of amending our current ordinance while we're trying to write a new ordinance. And that's what this does. This is the final reading, the public hearing, and then consideration for adoption.
Perfect. So, we're looking for somebody to make a motion to hold the final reading of proposed ordinance number 1519, an interim ordinance placing a temporary moratorium on applications to amend the zoning ordinance, including the official zoning map of the city, and directing the studies of official controls related thereto be conducted and dispensed with the actual reading of the ordinance.
I so move.
Motion by Stunick.
Second.
Is there a second by Pritchett? Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Mayor? Uh, you can't, let us get through this, and then, and then I'll give you the floor. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in, this is the final reading, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that passes unanimously. And now, we are going to open the public hearing at 8:28 on ordinance number 1519. Anybody in the audience who's here to speak on ordinance 1519, the temporary moratorium on zoning? Anybody online? You would raise your hand by pressing star 3. Don't see any, Sean? Okay, it is 8:29, and I will close the public hearing. Looking for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 1519?
So moved.
Motion by Stangline is our second, second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yep.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Next up?
Bushes.
Bushes. We need more bushes. Item C is the call for applicants. This is informational. Mr. Mayor, call some applicants.
All right, call for applicants. As always, www.cia.brainer.mn.us. The following are available and are recommended by the mayor. Cable TV Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2021, one term expiring 2022. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022. Housing and redevelopment authority, one term expiring 2022. Rental dwelling license, Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. Transportation Advisory Committee, one term expiring 2022. We also have the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring 2021, and one term expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you were gonna talk about, let's do it during your report.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I just want you to know, Gabe Johnson, that Mr. Mayor was very upset that you stole the love of his thunder on the cable advisory openings. It's kinda, it's kinda his baby.
You know, it was retaliation for him voting on the school.
Fair enough. I, I for one was completely taken aback by that. And as council president, I have one position on Police and Fire Civil Service Commission, one term to expire 2023, as well as ad hoc committees, which is the Water Tower Committee. Item eight, new business. So, we're looking to an adoption of resolution providing for the issuance and sale of General Obligation Bonds Series 2021 in the proposed aggregate principal amount of $7,880,000. Administrator Bergman, there was a correction in what was in our packet. You want to just explain real quickly what that is?
Sure, I sure can. It was just a, an amended resolution. You should've had that emailed to you, and then also, it should be in front of you as well.
Perfect. Okay. Mr. Simon, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet and the correction offered by Administrator Bergman?
Always.
I thought you might.
And members. Good to be here this evening. Just a couple of high points for, that, that are in your packet in the pre-sale summary. Your total bond issuance proposed is $7,880,000. I'll be back here on the 20th of September to present the results of a competitive sale of $7,880,000 in, in General Obligation Bonds. $5,915,000 of that is a 20-year amortized issue for your water utility. Those are General Obligation Water Utility Revenue Bonds. And $1,965,000 is for your improvement projects, three specific improvement projects. And then, just one last item. We'll be with your staff in a, a call with Standard and Poor's the week of September 6th to explain the issue, explain what's going on in Brainerd, and have them reassess your double A-minus rating.
Any questions of Mr. Simon? Yes, Gabe?
I just want to say, it's always good to see you, Paul. Just not too often. Come around once every couple of years.
I understand.
All right, thank you, Gabe. Any other questions? Hearing none. We're looking for a motion to adopt, adopt the corrected emailed resolution providing for the issuance of the sale of General Obligation Bonds Series 2021A in the proposed aggregate principal amount of $7,880,000. Is there a motion? Motion by Pritchett, second by Johnson. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Minister Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that motion is adopted. Next up is the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We usually ask to keep it to, two to three minutes. Anybody in the audience that wishes to come forward, state your name and address, and address the council on anything that has not been addressed this evening. Anybody at all? Please, come on forward. You have to state your name and your address, 'cause we're also on TV, sort of, YouTube TV.
Sounds good.
And you got, and you got, like, three minutes, okay?
All right.
All right.
Um, my name is Jordan Dusbobik. Yes. I live in Barrows, 6976 Kuna Avenue.
Okay.
I'm here to talk about a skate park for the city, and how it is very needed and a necessity for kids growing up. I just got done rolling around on my rollerblades, which I do tricks on, and I've noticed there's a lack of places to skate or sesh, if you will. And I feel it is very needed for kids growing up, looking for a hobby. I don't know how to really put this, 'cause it's kind of not on the spot, but it's in the Olympics. It's a, it's a sport. It's a nender, a never-ending, progressing sport. Sorry, I'm really nervous. It's hard to talk about in front of
Everybody's gone.
I don't know. I'd just like for you guys to take it into consideration for all of your children, and even you guys. I know people that are your guys' age, and
He, he means old.
Yes.
I've got a four-wheeler, uh, board.
It's for people of all ages, all ethnicities. Doesn't matter. You can do it. Scooters, skateboarders, rollerbladers.
Wheelchairs.
It's in, it's a sport. He's not wrong. And obviously, 18-some years ago, we had Jaycee's Park, or however long ago it was, put up, and it was in a bad place and a bad location. So, the bad eggs got to it and vandalized it. But I believe if you put up a skate park in somewhere that's open and patrolled by police or has security cameras, be amazing for kids our age and people your age.
Would you do me a favor?
Yes, of course.
You're not the first person to ask for this. But can you come back here during the week with your name and address and phone number, and just leave it at City Hall?
Yes, of course.
Because you're, you're not the first person to ask for this.
Mm-hmm.
And, and truth be told, it'll probably end up right with this man, because, because everything costs money. And, and we let him, crazy as it may sound, handle the purse business. But, but it's not just the money, it's the place, and it's the upkeep, and it's the vandalism, which is what took it down last time, right?
Yes, of course.
All right. And it, it's an ongoing issue in other parks, other public places.
Yeah.
But, but we need help from, yeah, right on. So, please.
I guarantee you.
All right. Well, don't, 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 just say you'll help.
Somebody's calling for your help.
And if you can get other young people to help, I'm absolutely positive this committee would want to hear from you.
And
Really want to hear from you bad.
Any chance he'd want to be on the Cable TV Commission?
It's from Barrows.
Oh, you're right.
Tried to get your mom. I did.
Well, he can arrange you can do his skateboarding on TV.
Can the mayor ask you a question?
Of course.
Jordan, are you a, a member or a part of the, the Lakes Area Skate Park Group?
Yes.
Yeah.
The petition?
Yes.
Uh-huh, yeah, I signed that several times.
Perfect. I just wanted
Only signed it once.
Okay. Each time he came around, not in succession.
We gotta cut off your three minutes. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Your input is needed and welcomed. So, yeah, you can probably get, get right over there to Tony. Okay, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in open forum, or on, online? If you're online and you want to speak in open forum, you would hit star 3, and then, and then our IT director will, will recognize you. That's like raising your hand, and then star 6 will unmute you. No? I just don't see anybody. So, anybody else in the room? Hearing none. We will close the public forum, go on to staff reports. We'll start over here at Attorney Langill. Anything? Community Development Director and Assistant Attorney Chansky? None. Engineer Sandy?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So, if you notice when you walked up the stairs tonight, we have stickers placed at strategic locations around the city and on Highway 210. It's part of the engagement process that MnDOT and the city and the county are going through. So, there's a QR code on those stickers, and that'll take you directly to the online open house. So, basically, all the information that you guys saw at the elected officials meeting is on an online open house, and those QR codes will take you there. They're placed, one here at the front steps, there's one on the sidewalk, on the public sidewalk in front of Land Services. There's one downtown at the corner of 7th and Laurel, and then at the major and then at the major intersections on Highway two-ten, Northwest Fourth Street, there's one, there's one on the bridge, near Chippewa Street. There is one at North Fourth, North Sixth, or South Sixth Street and South Eighth Street. There is one at Southeast Thirteenth and one at Mill Avenue for people, pedestrians, to stop, click on the QR code and go through and make any comments about that specific intersection or comments in general about the corridor. MNDOT did send out a flyer in the BPU mailer also, so all the residents or people that pay a BPU bill should've gotten something recently to also participate in that open house, and they indicated that they've gotten a lot of responses. And so we're hoping to try to engage as much of the public as we can during this process. That should go through about mid-September into early October.
Thank you, Mr. Engineer. Final instructor Hillman, nothing to add? IT and GIS Director Strong, anything to add? Police Chief, anything to add? Yes, please.
I do. Just wanna update, in my monthly report, we talked about the upward-bound fishing with cops event that had been going on, planning for the last two or three months. It went off last Wednesday. We had twenty-four kids join us. The cops loved it cuz they got to go out in not uniform and fish with the little kiddos on Ernie, or out on Gull Lake, and we had lunch afterwards. We provided them with a fishing pole, a tackle box, lunch, and we were joined by all of our partners, State Patrol, DNR, Crow Wing County, Baxter, Brainard, Crow, and Crosby, along with Breezy Point, so we had a great showing of law enforcement officers in uniform and out of uniform. It was a great event. Some kids had never been on a boat, some kids had never fished, and when we were able to tell them that they could bring their, their tackle box and their fishing rods home was a lot of fun to watch that. And a lot of them, once we were done eating, they went back out on the docks and continued fishing. So it was a great event. It was sponsored by Justice System Consortium that I'm part of, along with Region Five and Sourcewell with a grant, and it provided us to use funds to rent pontoons and, and partnered with Ernie's, which was great, that we did all the onboarding and offboarding up there at their facility. And just a great event, we went out with twenty-four kids, we came back with twenty-four kids. So that was a huge success.
And all the police officers, too.
And all the police officers. And, and I'll tell ya, all the kids loved it, but the cops loved it more. They said, can we do it again? And so that was a great outreach for our diverse youth population in our area, so it was a great, great event.
Did you catch anything?
They caught so many fish, each kid caught a fish, which was great. And numerous ones caught, you know, ten, fifteen fish in just a couple of hours, so we had a great day out there. Great, great event.
Thank you, Chief. And Administrator Burgman?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. A few things, we did have our first union negotiation with LALS on August fourth. We have another one scheduled for September sixteenth, so moving that forward, our first one with Hydro is next week, and I'm not sure when Teamsters is. Another thing I wanted to update you on is that we did have a meeting with Senator Rude to discuss the city's bonding request. Staff met with the senator, just to give her a little background on what the requests were. She was very excited, actually, not only for the water storage tanks, but also for the trail, extending the trail. So we'll see what happens, but I was glad that she reached out. Was on Community Focus on August ninth, spent quite a bit of time kind of giving some shout-outs to the Sesquicentennial, so I'm gonna give you an update on that. I, or Tiffany, are you going to?
You can, Jennifer.
All right. So we have a number of really fun events coming up. As you know, we're celebrating the week between September eighteenth and the twenty-fifth, and it's gonna start with the Brainard Airport, that is doing a takeoff into the Sesquicentennial between nine and three PM on the eighteenth. There will be a history walk on that day, the J.C.'s will be doing a rubber ducky race at four PM. The mayor will be doing a kickoff event and a proclamation and a city council alumni event. There will be more information forwarded to you on that. And then scattering events throughout the week. The City Hall will do an open house, so people can walk through City Hall between four-thirty and six-thirty, see the history of Brainard. The DDBC will be doing the Here for Good Market, which will include funny faces ping-pong races and a history walk. The Chamber will be doing an event at Rumbly Hall from four-thirty to six-thirty on their time capsule, which will be followed up by a really fun trivia night. That will be Brainard history, and we're actually encouraging people to study for it, making books available so that people can read about the history of Brainard and get ready for that. We will end it with Stride and Seek on the twenty-fifth. Sheila de Chantelle is pulling that together, as well as another downtown history walk. The Brainard Parks and Rec Sesquicentennial Bash, which you heard a little bit about tonight, and then ending it that evening with the J.C. Street Fest. But we're not gonna stop there, because we're gonna also have a flapjack event on the twenty-sixth. So just a lot of really fun things happening that week. We will make sure that you have a schedule now that you have approved the $750 for the printing. We are going to be doing some calendars and all kinds of other promo materials, so stay tuned. And then last but not least, I, I really wanna give a shout-out to our intern, Jessie Ernstur, really has helped pull this all together. She's done an amazing job. That's not the only thing she's working on. She's also working on a new resident packet, which we hope to have done by the end of August, so hope to have that for your review here sometime at the beginning of September. And that's probably enough from me, Mr. President, or I could go on if you'd like me to.
I gotta, all right.
All right.
I need to work tomorrow at six.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll start down at this end, since we're on Sesquicentennial.
Thank you.
Tiffany Stengline.
Just don't ask me to spell it. So first, the Brainard Unified Fund, we've had a few meetings, and we have, I'm watching my, my language on this, Joe. We have cleansed a great deal of the money, not laundered, cleansed. And so there is lots of money there. If anybody knows of somebody that needs that kind of a gap funding, there's lots of money in that fund.
Oh, no, no, yeah, keep going.
Yeah, okay. So then the other thing is that it has come to my attention, just in the last few hours here, that six-foot-tall fences with eighty percent opacity are apparently not loved in the community. So I, yes, okay, so, but it was part of the conditional, conditions placed on them under the zoning code. So I'm gonna just throw that into David Chansky's lap, since we're gonna be redoing the zoning code anyway.
No text amendment requests, we have banned it.
Yep.
Nope, yep.
Don't record.
Is that the question?
That, yes, that was my, is if, if it would be appropriate to specifically refer it, but I feel like I've accomplished it.
I think, I think you did.
Thumbs up.
I actually have something.
Whoa.
Yes. Last Tuesday, I attended the North Gregory Park Party, it was really good. I loved the fire truck, it was so good. And then I also went to the Baxter event, which was really good, too, and they had another fire truck. I went home with goosebumps. That's my report.
Chairman Johnson?
He couldn't let the police have the last word at the meeting, I don't think. I have one thing. Last night, I went over to Lum Park and attended the ski loo, Brainard Ski Loons Water Ski Show, along with hundreds of other entertained locals for a free water ski show event. It was fantastic. This is a great partnership the Parks Department has with a great organization that's teaching hundreds of kids how to ski. They have one show left this year, this Wednesday, August eighteenth, six-thirty PM. The show is about an hour and a half, they have concessions available. I recommend going. Scooby-Doo themed, mysteries and all, it's amazing.
Okay. I, I've been to that, I, I must've missed half of it. Pat Erickson?
I was, I'll second that about the water skiing. I was there just prior to the meeting, they were out running again. And, but just a couple of committee updates for me. Fire Advisory Board met earlier this afternoon. While emergency services are obviously well in hand, the emergency service, not just fire, but calls are up year over year. Among many other factors, it's really kinda considered that the increase in population is driving that. People who had the ability to work from home kinda stayed in the area, they liked, they liked the area. So population's up, and then additionally, just no rain, it's kinda driven to additional fires. So those things are kinda causing the emergency service calls overall to go up.
Turn them all into schools.
Of course, things are well in hand. In addition to that, Northland Arboretum Board of Directors meets this Thursday, or I'm sorry, Thursday the twenty-sixth, August twenty-sixth. Then of course, Planning Commission, as was mentioned, this Wednesday, eighteenth. I just wanted to mention also, too, coming, following our council workshop with the Planning Commission, and then the discussion that we had two weeks previously at council, I thought the list, the more intensive listening sessions that we did with consultants and staff was very helpful, and I hope you found that helpful as well. Hopefully, that kinda helps get staff, consultants, the Planning Commission, and then council, not necessarily on the same page, but at least moving in the right direction that we all understand. So hopefully that was helpful, I know I found it helpful, as the Planning Commission works with staff and consultants to kinda move into that next phase of more intensive development of the, or the zoning update. That's it for me, thanks.
Excellent. Dave Pritchett?
I just wanna say that I'm, I'm very saddened by the sequence of events that caused the Lake Erie Music Festival to cancel. They took all precautions that they possibly could. So went to the gala, it was fantastic. So, you know, hunger's the best sauce, as they say, so next year it's gonna be even better, so.
Excellent. Michael O'Day?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring one thing up. We had our EDA meeting a couple of weeks ago, almost. One thing that came up towards the end of the meeting and discussion regarding the new highway that we, I don't even remember why we discussed it, but somebody in the, in the audience brought up, use the Walkable Bikeable Committee to make it safer and easier to cross. And we said, we just disbanded that committee on Monday, but it was with the intent to start it up again with a specific task. A specific task would be to make a better experience walking or crossing along or across the new, the new Highway two-ten in Brainard. That, along with brand-new lights that we're gonna request, is gonna make it a pretty nice.
And butts. And bushes.
And a parking lot. Probably some bushes, hopefully some trees.
Can we put a fence up, too?
No fences.
A little fence. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. So I wanna thank Gabe Johnson for helping us through last week, or two weeks ago, on a difficult, but I think all of us did a good job issue this evening, but I really wanna thank Gabe. I wasn't able to be here, and I wanna thank everybody who expressed their condolences on the loss of my mother-in-law. I wasn't able to be here last time, and I, I sent my potato chips to the Northside resident picnic, how were they, chief?
They were excellent.
I noticed you were holding back on, on that, but.
They were excellent. If I'd have known they were yours, I'd still be there.
Sorry, I had to beat it out of you, but there are plenty left over. And Administrator Burgman just gave me, I'm gonna call this great news, the latest census shows an increase in Brainard's population from thirteen thousand five hundred and ninety to fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety, and then there's some sort of hieroglyphic thing left on.
Five, three hundred and ninety-five.
We're limbo yet.
So if you're not living in Brainard, you've still got work to do. All right, now, I've saved the best for last. I promised I'm a, a minimum of two hours, cuz that's what was gonna be needed. Mayor Dave Badoe, and I, I, I want, no, no, no. I want you to learn, I learned a little bit about the Badoe mystique, cuz we all wonder, how does he do it, right? I mean, he's mayor of the greatest city on earth. He's part of community action. His hair always looks good. And I found out today that there's, there's the Puppet Master behind the scene, her name is Izzy Badoe, she's the one who's pulling the strings. So next time you wonder, how does Mayor Badoe do it all? He doesn't. No further ado, Mayor Badoe.
Yeah, well, so for clear, for clarification, Izzy is my daughter, as.
Secretary to the stars.
Secretary to the stars. We had some vehicle work to get done. Kelly enjoyed.
Well, thank you for your report.
First of all, hunger is the best sauce, never heard that.
It's a German saying.
That is amazing, and I made note of it, it's that good. Secondly, Park Board will be presenting their budget at the workshop on the thirtieth. I have voiced some of the concerns or some of the dialogue that I've been hearing from individuals on the council, but if you have anything that you would like to be presented or like to be passed on to them at their next meeting, which they will be having before they present to you, please let me know, and I will liaise, as is my job. The next item up for bid here is the Water Tower Flapjack Festival, which came up just briefly. Undersold, undersold.
Leaving it to the mayor.
Undersold. This will be a pancake feed that will be happening in conjunction with the Legion, who does their Sunday breakfast on the fourth Sunday of every month.
Which is this Sunday again.
Okay, so you can get a view of what it's gonna be this Sunday, but you're gonna wanna stick around for September twenty-sixth. That just happens to be National Lumberjack Day, and so we will be holding some events as the Water Tower Committee. Three major things coming at you. You've got costume contest, come as a lumberjack, come as Paul Bunyan, come as what you will. We've got pancake eating contest, both for adult and child, children's divisions. We will put the two against each other, crown a champion. Third is the thing I'm the most excited about, pancake races. It is a pancake relay, you gotta carry a pancake, you gotta flip it over a ribbon, you gotta catch the pancake, you got, uh, teams of three going at each other. We're gonna crown a champion, see who can flip and run the fastest with a pancake. That should be coming before you guys as an event application. I, I was asked by Jennifer Burgman not to present that application myself, but to have someone else from the committee do so, and we're just waiting for them to do that. So that will be coming at you, it's gonna be so much fun. Hopefully, first annual Water Tower Flapjack Festival. The last item is not quite so fun. I'm gonna speak out just super fast about the process in which we are moving forward with this Planning and Zoning Code and the listening sessions. And the reason I'm gonna speak out against it, initially, when it first came up, I thought, well, I'd like to be included in that. I, I'd like to at least have my, my words included and my, my thoughts on it included. However, the more I thought about it, I became more concerned about the fact that we are having closed-session meetings individually on a subject that really should include all of our citizens. And I greatly dislike when we create hindrances or barriers for our public to understand what our feelings are, or what our directions are, or what our individual thoughts on processes are. And it really bothered me when I came to City Hall and I saw Councilman Tad Johnson sitting in a hallway. Erickson, excuse me, Tad Erickson, wrong Tad, sitting in a hallway, right, right, Tad, you are correct.
One of the Tads.
Right, Tad, not Councilman Johnson's brother, but Tad Erickson, sitting in a hallway, waiting for a closed door to be opened so that he could go in and share his thoughts on a subject that is really important. I don't like that we did that. I think that it is really important for us to allow the public to hear what our thoughts are, and it's really important for the public to have easy access to those thoughts. I'd like to know where that information is. I'd like to know how, as a citizen, I can hear those thoughts in a, in a manner in which they were said and not a regurgitation of those thoughts. And I really would hope that our public thinks the same, that would like to know what we think. And those thoughts should've been shared in these council chambers, there should've been a way for us to do so, so that we could do so in a way that is effective and gets things done, but isn't done behind closed doors.